And we found that it is bogged down in the travel process and the reimbursement process. It's also very cumbersome for the district staff.
Thank you. So, basically, the changes that we're proposing here, we feel will expedite and decrease some of the workload on the staff at the district office and the people who are traveling. So, does anybody have any questions? Well, there's quite a few changes, so...
Do board members have questions?
I'm sorry. Do board members have questions at this time?
Can you give some of the general changes that you...
The highlights. Basically, as you remember, when we first looked at this travel policy, everything that was $500 or greater came to the board. Then we increased it to 1,200. With flights, the registration, and then a couple of nights in a hotel, you can get to $1,200 very quickly. So, we're proposing that it goes up to 3,000, just because we can get them so they don't have to be board-approved and that 3,000, anything greater than 3,000. So, that way, that people can travel and get out there faster and get through the process faster. Another thing is that we have stopped having the itemized receipts, and that has been a real burden on the accounting department because they've had to, everybody turns in the whole receipt, puts down the whole amount of money, instead of just saying, it's just this little, you know, this part of it. So, it's taken a lot of time, and so, we just felt the per dam was an easier way to go. And it's less hassle for the traveler.
Ms. Parker?
I highly appreciate that. As we were trying to figure out, I remember at our CSBA conference last year, you know, who's going to turn in this receipt for what and can I Xerox it for that? I mean, it just makes sense for the low amount for food to be taken care of without an itemized receipt. Thank you. I guess I have one comment and one, or one just like minor change, but one question for you, and that is on the governing board members. It says, "The governing board members," on page six of seven, "will adhere to the same policies established above for all district employees." Now, does that, when you say "above," is that all the way back to page one? Is that everything...
Well, this question was brought up by Ms. Lamont earlier, and, you know, I hadn't really thought about that, but I don't believe that you guys need to fill out a request to be absent and things like that.
That's really my question.
Right. And I think what we'll have to do is, you know, what the intent was, that you turn in your per dam, you turn in some sort of receipt, you know, reimbursement slip to get reimbursed for these items, but you follow those types of things. We're not going to reimburse you for alcohol. We're not going to reimburse...
Right, right, right.
You know, those types of things. Do you have to fill out a request to be absent? We'll take that part out.
Can you, I guess my question is, would it be possible to simply create an alternate form for, because I do feel like it, there's a part at the beginning where it says, "All superintendent travel greater than $400 requires the request to be absent, et cetera, et cetera, to be signed by the superintendent and the president of the governing board or designee." I mean, I think it makes some sense that whatever travel that we're doing should be signed off by the board president or by the designee, if it's the board president that's traveling, and by the superintendent. It's just, that's not quite the right form for us.
Okay.
But... Can I just weigh in on that?
Yes, Ms. Deacon.
Because I also looked at that one, and I, because I know Ms. Lamont and I just went to a conference, and reading this through, I realized, well, we didn't fill out that request to go form, although we're submitting after the fact forms. But if you look at board policy, the board bylaws, 9250, I don't know if Ms. Parker looked at that, it actually says that board members will comply with all the regulations or rules that apply to other staff. So, we need somewhere to make those two match up and make a determination about that.
And I have a request into SIS because that's what this is all about, is to make sure we have, if you're on district business, that you're covered liability-wise. So, we have a question, you know, how far does this go? Is it from, you know, from here to SBCEO, you know, or to Lompoc for a meeting, or to, you know, Buellton, wherever, or is it outside the county? So, we're trying to get, you know, an opinion on that from SIS, and we haven't heard back from them yet. But I can also ask about if board members should be filling those out for the, and follow the same policy.
Right. And I certainly wouldn't have a problem with submitting those requests, just like everybody else does.
Ms. Parker?
Well, just to finish up, I think, and because Ms. Chite, you are recommending that we waive a second reading on this and go ahead and adopt, I'll give you some suggested language, and I guess other board members haven't chimed in yet, they may have other additions that they want to make. But my suggestion would be that on the underline on page one of seven, that it says, "All superintendent and board member travel," so just insert "and board member" between superintendent and "travel," then keep the "greater than $400 requires the, quote, 'request to be absent from regular assignment,' then after that, I would put the word "form," or actually, no, I guess I wouldn't put it right there. I would put in "or appropriate board member form to be signed by the superintendent and president," and then continue with that. And then, yes, and so, I'd keep that "all," it's signed by superintendent and president of the governing board or designee, keep all that language. And then, the only other change that I would say is, on page six of seven, number one at the bottom, it should say, "Double accommodation is highly recommended." And so, add the ED there, and those would be my two suggestions if we're going to actually approve anything tonight.
And you said the bottom of page six?
Bottom of page six of seven, there's the number one, where it says, "Double accommodation."
Mm-hmm.
It's just missing the past tense there, "is recommended."
Oh, okay.
I had a quick question. On page five of seven, under "All Other Ground Transportation," the very last sentence says, "Taxis will be reimbursed to and from the airport and hotel." Use of taxis for non-hotel, et cetera. But we had talked about also other conference events, if an event is held off-site from the hotel where the conference is being held, possibly reimbursing for the taxis there.
The only thing that we were thinking about that, how would we ever prove that? How, you know, I don't know of any conference that I go to that says, "And dinner will be held at over here," you know? So, I don't know if you come across that, but I, how would we prove that that was a non-business?
Well, the example that I gave you was, for example, the conference that I just went to for Eric, and the dinner for the honorees was being held off-site from the hotel where the conference was being held. And that, I think that, I think that was listed as an off-site event. So, if people were attending something like that, it would seem to me appropriate that transportation, whether it's taxi or not is another issue, but transportation there should be reimbursable.
Could it include language that says, "Taxis will be reimbursed to and from the airport and hotel," and then something in relationship to conference-related?
I just put "and conference events."
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
Official conference events with documentation.
Okay. It's fine with me.
Your point about taxis, I'm wondering if just transportation could be used. I'm thinking about when we had all the schools at model conferences, we had to rent vans. I mean, I know you talk about rental, but that was far cheaper than going with taxis. I don't know if there's a generic term like just transportation.
Yeah, transportation.
That's fine, because there's a lot of airport shuttles and all that kind of thing.
Well, it's under rentals, taxis, and shuttle, and parking, so maybe we can, we'll reword that, so it works for the whole shuttle and...
Okay.
Probably transportation is a better word.
Thank you.
Transportation, yeah. So, it would read, "Transportation will be reimbursed to and from the airport and hotel and, from the airport, comma, hotel, and official conference events with documentation." Period.
And I thought we had also talked about, and forgive me if I missed it in here, a sort of a cutoff time. Oh, is that under, would that be included under the accommodations where it says, "Official business terminates after 5:00 PM?" No, I don't think that's it, actually. Remember, we had talked about, you can't, we wouldn't be reimbursing for taxis at, like, 8:00 at night, when people want to just go out and see a show or something.
It's been done. It's been asked for.
Unfortunately, Ms. Chite was sharing some of the things that had, have actually been requested for reimbursement, and they were illuminating.
I wonder if that last line, though, where it says, "Use of maybe transportation for non-school-related business will not be reimbursed," would that cover all of that?
Yeah, perhaps. Maybe that's good enough.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, do we want, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamont?
Thank you, Ms. Chite. I had a lot of questions and comments, but besides the questions, the two other things that I would actually like to change, and Ms. Chite actually already has the language for this, but page one, under F3, second paragraph that starts with principals, under general information, I would like to change that to read, "Principals, department heads shall only approve travel if it is found that employees' activities, that the employees' activities will benefit the district, comma, funding is available, comma, and prior authorization has been secured." And so...
May I ask, they're the ones that provide the prior authorization, I mean, what prior authorization for the, for the...
For the travel.
From whom?
From... Getting it from?
Well, who, from whoever is above them. So, in some cases, it would need to be board-approved. Am I incorrect?
Well, this is, I believe this is for when a teacher or someone under my department wants to go somewhere. I would be approving the travel that found the employees' activity will benefit the district, the funding is available, but the prior...
Yeah, this is not the principals' traveling.
So, I'm sorry.
This is the principals' approving.
Approving, so, then actually, strike that, because I had misread it. Yeah, sorry, strike that.
I kind of like the benefit of the district, the funding is, and the funding is available, but we don't need the prior authorization has been secured.
Right. So, then, strike that. Sorry about that. I misread it. And then, in the second, on page two, the second paragraph, this actual paragraph is listed three different times in this document, but this is the only time where it's missing some elements that are in the other two, which...
Which paragraph are you looking at?
So, it's page two, and it's the second paragraph that starts with, "To expedite lodging and..."
Okay.
So, that paragraph in other sections lists the word "if possible" after, after the sentence, "The request to be absent from regular assignment must be completed by the employment, signed by the principal department head, and submitted to the associate superintendent of education sites only, or deputy superintendent district graph only, for approval nor later than 30 days prior to travel, if possible." So, in the other two places, it says the word "if possible," and then, in the other two places, it also has the sentence, "Under extreme circumstances, travel may be approved by the superintendent or designee for request, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So, I just wanted, since this exact same paragraph is in three different places, but only one of them is missing some of the language, I wanted all three paragraphs to be consistent.
May I ask, where's another example of the paragraph?
Page three, seven. So, page three of seven, if you look at, under "In-state travel greater than 400 but less than 3,000," and then, the other place is, let's see...
Where exactly is it?
I'm going to make a radical recommendation that might eliminate the need to even do that, so I'm just going to set that aside.
Okay.
What's your radical recommendation?
Top of page four.
And the top of page four. Yes. So, it's in there three times, but on page three and four, it's, the wording is one way, and on page two, it's a different way. And so, I just wanted all three to be consistent.
So, I'm sorry, on page four, where does it start with, "To expedite lodging and registration?"
On page four, it starts, no, I'm sorry, it starts, "The request to be absent form from regular assignment must be completed by the employee, signed by the principal department head."
So, I'm just relating this paragraph to this paragraph, the request to be absent.
So, the, so the, are you looking at which one?
I'm looking, I'm comparing the first paragraph on page, or the second paragraph on page two to the last paragraph on page three at this point.
So, it's here once, it's here once.
Oh, I see. So, it's not, it's not...
It's the sentence.
It's at the, oh, it's this paragraph in page three of seven.
This one and this one? If that matches with this one?
Just the last sentence in that one?
Uh, right here, let's see, "The request to be reimbursed submitted."
I'm trying to compare this, but it's not quite right.
So, it's like in the middle of page three and on the bottom of page three?
Yeah, it's in the middle of page three and the bottom of, so...
Where do you want to add something here?
I wanted to add the word "if possible," but "if possible" to the 30-day, so, the employee name must be provided for the purchasing department for a minimum of 30 days, days prior to travel, comma, "if possible."
If possible, thank you.
And then, then it says, "The whole failure to adhere these deadlines may result in cancellation of travel," and then, this one doesn't have anything about "under extreme circumstances."
Okay.
But I think that was five minutes of something that may change.
Okay. So, let's hear from Ms. Deacon to see if we do need to...
Let me throw this out there. You know, maybe I'm missing something, and this doesn't sound like a good idea, but the journalists in me really wanted to condense. And so, what I realized was, the language on page three of seven that says, "In-state travel greater than 400 but less than 3,000," was identical to the language under "out-of-state travel" or "in-state travel greater than 3,000," with, I think, the exception of one line, and that one line had to do with approval by the governing board. So, it might be possible to take this line that says, "In-state travel greater than 400," eliminate "but less than 3,000," eliminate the whole section that says, "Out-of-state travel" or "in-state travel greater than 3,000," and then, add a line in under the remaining heading that says, "All travel greater than 3,000 or out-of-state must be approved by the governing board," because I think that's the only difference. I guess what I'm, I'm trying to make it user-friendly, and so, I'm trying to think about someone who is reading this and trying to figure out all the different pieces.
So, let me just, so you would say, "In-state travel greater than $400," take out the "but less than 3,000."
Right.
And at the, and basically, stop at that, after that section, but add "all..."
"All travel greater than 3,000 or out-of-state must also be approved by the governing board."
Would we change that first line to just say, "Travel greater than $400," instead of "in-state"?
Yeah, it'd be better, yeah. In fact, then we wouldn't even have to add the out-of-state. I mean, is there ever any out-of-state travel that's less than $400?
I doubt that. Unless they're walking.
I wondered about that. Although, unless someone stayed with relatives and got a cheap flight and they went to a free conference. I mean, you know, under accommodations, we ask for all those to go through the purchasing department, but if it's under 400, we're not asking them to go through purchasing. So, I did wonder about that as well.
Well, we're not, we're still asking them to go through purchasing, but they can, they can register and everything on their own, like going to the Santa Barbara County Education Office, $30. They can go ahead and register, and what we're asking is that the site would, you know, say, "We're sending 10 people to Santa Barbara, you know, County Education Office, $30 a piece, here's the rec," and put it through, but they're already registered. So, it just expedites it.
Right, right.
And we just lump it in one, one big requisition instead of, and they're willing to break it out when it comes down to if people individually paid for it.
Right. And the other thing I wondered about, and this is just a structural thing, too, is because, I guess in my mind, registration comes before travel, but in this document, we've got travel first and registration follows, that we could just take that registration chunk and put it in front of travel, but I'm not wedded to that.
So, would you like to see this, once we clean it all up and finish it and put it under a consent item?
I would prefer to see that if it doesn't, if you feel like it doesn't prolong the process too much. I don't know if there's anything coming through that you want it to get taken care of immediately, but I would actually prefer to see it.
Okay.
Ms. Parker?
The only thing that I would say on that is that this is an administrative regulation, so it does not require board approval. So, if you need it before then, I would say...
That's true.
It's probably fine. I think it's always great, because we traditionally approve our ARs. So, I think it's great for it to come back for official approval, but if you need it, given our direction tonight, it can be implemented by the superintendent.
Okay.
I think conceptually, I hear that there's some agreement in concepts in the changes. There's some issues in relationship to some of the specific items.
The only thing that I would add is that you still need Ms. Lamont's language on page two of seven, but I, so I still think that that does need to get added, but I completely agree with Ms. Deacon's revisions. I think that that works right.
Okay. Mr. Heron?
I just have one, well, one technical. I see the term deputy superintendent, and we don't have a deputy superintendent.
Notice that also does not...
Does that change what you would put in there?
I was trying to think what we would put in there so that we could not have to revise it every time. So, we'll think about that.
The other thing...
Chief business officer.
Yeah, we could do CBO.
Yeah. The other thing that, I guess, sort of bothers me is the $3,000 number. For an individual going someplace, that probably is reasonable, but we sometimes have eight or nine or 10 people going someplace, and theoretically, that could be a $25,000 expense, and we wouldn't see it. Well, if we saw it, we might say, "Hey, why are we sending 10 people? Why not send five?" I don't, so how does that work if there were eight people going, it was $2,500 a person, so that's $20,000?
You're absolutely right. You wouldn't see it specifically. You would see it in your purchase orders in your buy, I know, I understand.
Yeah. I mean, that's, so I bother, I guess I'm worried about the $3,000 number in, to have that many people leave town and we don't even know it, where we might have a feeling that it's not right.
You know, may I offer a suggestion? I hate to give myself additional work, but I'm about to. In former districts, we have, the superintendent's offices provided the board regularly, a list of all the professional development conferences, here's the intended scheduled events that are going to be happening, these deep-ten teachers are going to be going to the National Council Teachers of English in March, that don't always go before the board for approval. In other districts, that was only really the out-of-state travel that ever got approved, the rest of it, no matter what the cost was, the rest was in-state, was, the board never saw it, yet the board's still got a list of all of that. Would that be helpful?
Anything that we, I don't want to be blindsided after they're on the plane leaving, being called and said, "Why'd you send 10 people to Dallas?" You know? And I say, "Well, I didn't know it." I don't like being in that position.
But that's out-of-state. You would know it. That would come to it.
Okay.
But, for example, there are four of us who are going to Casbo, the registration is like $665. We're driving, we're going to carpool, but, you know, hotel is $275 a night. I mean, it gets up there, and we're just going for a little business conference.
I just point that out.
Is, I'm sorry, is there any way to draft language that would put a threshold on the total amount for all the people who are attending, so that we would see it? So, $3,000 individually or X amount for the total number of people going?
That would work if we knew that not every single, that they put in, one site said, "We're sending 10 people to San Diego."
Ah, I see.
If they send in Meg and Dave, you know, we're not going to, no one has the manpower to do those to get...
We had that once, where we had five going from this school, and then, a week, two, a meeting later, we had 10 from this school. All of a sudden, we had 20 or 30 people going, it was a big dollar amount.
Yeah.
That, I just, I just expressed that as a concern to me.
That is a concern, I think.
Ms. Cordell?
And I'm not sure how to address that, but maybe...
I can work on trying to put together some way in which, prior to that, you get that information. So, let me, let me think about that.
Okay. Ms. Lamont?
What, what additional work does it create to leave the 1,200 threshold for approval? What additional work does that create? So, I'm trying to figure out, because I actually, I hear what Mr. Heron's saying, and part of why I liked it, too, is because the public got to see how we were training our teachers and where they were going. And so, I think that piece is going to, we're going to miss that piece even if it's just communicated to us. So, I'm trying to figure out, like, if we kept it at 1,200, what additional work does that thing create?
I don't think it creates any more work for us. It's the amount of time. Let's say they wanted to go in December, they would have had to get this pre-approved by this board meeting, and then, registration. We miss early bird registrations, because especially in instruction upstairs, they get last-minute conferences, and all of a sudden, we're just scrambling around to get everybody booked and everything, and that's what slows it down, so...
It can also end up costing more.
That's what I was going to say. It costs the district more when we miss those kinds of opportunities. Mr. Heron?
Well, you mentioned a scenario where they'd have to get it today. Is that because we're not having a meeting in two weeks?
That could be. In December, we only have one also.
Well, that can be gotten around by giving the superintendent the power to make those decisions in those situations. So, I mean, I don't see that as a real problem. I think we can, that can be worked out.
My concern would be when people, when people find out about a conference late, and then, the deadline comes before they would be able, the deadline for early registration comes before they would be able to get it approved by the board, and so, then, we end up spending more money, because they can't officially register until we have approved it, and sometimes, then, that also ends up affecting flights, flight costs, and that can be really, that can be, that's much more of a concern than the registration cost, because those are significant, and hotels. And I just feel like, but my, I feel like it would, I would like to give them the more flexibility, and I think it doesn't, I think keeping it at 1,200 doesn't really address the concern that you were raising, Mr. Heron, because we could still, like we have in the past, still end up with five people here, 10 people there, you know, 12 people there.
Robin has promised that won't happen.
Right, but that, but if she's making that promise, she could make that, it won't happen for 3,000 either.
Now, I was just saying that if you accept a premise that they find out about it late, they're still going to pay the extra registration, they're still going to pay the higher price of travel, if they find out about it late.
No, what I'm saying is, let's say they find out about it tomorrow, and the early registration ends next week. They could apply and still get it, but not if they had to wait for board approval.
I'm saying Dr. Cash can make that a, I mean, we could write it, so Dr. Cash has the right to approve it under those scenarios. I've never seen a conference that doesn't give you a lot of advance notice that they're going to have a conference. The fact that we find out about it late, it might be our own problem.
Well, I think that happens a lot in education, though.
It does happen when...
Speaking as an educator who's tried to go to conferences.
Right. And we, you know, we try to get things out as soon as we have them, but sometimes, you know, principals of 18, 21 schools, whatever, they're not getting on it, they don't have a team, they have to add another person, and...
That's a different problem.
And that is a different problem, but what Meg talked about as far as the timely And that is a different problem, but what Meg talked about as far as the timeliness of the announcements, that just happens all the time. It really does. And I don't think anyone's, no one's trying to be not transparent at all. It's just that, that, that $1,200 means that almost any time we go to kind of a bigger conference, it has to go for board approval. So we can't get the plane flight, we can't get the registration, we can't get into the hotel that's right there. So then we pay for taxis for the hotel that's, you know, two miles away. It just, it just happens over and over again.
Okay, well, I'm going to hang on one second, Ms. Parker, and I'll get to your comment. But clearly, we have some discussion on this, so I think we cannot approve it tonight. It will have to come back to us, and it may need to come back for, on the action agenda rather than on the conference agenda. I'm sorry, rather than on the consent agenda, because it sounds like there may be some discussion. So with that, Ms. Parker, what do you have?
Well, I'll just say real briefly, because I want to be, and Mrs. Deacon clearly has the final comment too, but I, I just want to be clear. I don't have a problem with the $3,000. And I, and as we're having this discussion, and particularly for the public, I want to be really clear that 99% of the funding for conference and travel is for, from restricted funding. That is for conferences, that it is for teacher professional development. This is, we're not talking about general fund money. I mean, I think it sounds, I'm afraid it would sound to the public like, whoa, you know, this crazy district is off, and, you know, they have teachers traveling all the, on money that should be going to what's going on in the classroom. It, it only is for teacher training. It is meant for workshops, conferences, and travel to and from, hotels to and from, these things. And so I'm more concerned in, because I trust so much what our administrators are doing, both at the site level and at the district office level, if, whether or not a conference is important enough to spend the money on, and whether they do need a team to go. But I, I would more concerned for the superintendent to see, to show the board, how does that fit in this year's picture of training? You may find a last-minute conference, but does that fit with the mission of the district? Does it fit with our, you know, year 11, 12 goals? That's what I want to know. That's what I want to have faith in, and so that's what I would hope Dr. Cash would be able to put together for us.
Well, yeah, with a strategic plan, it'll be, we'll be in a much cleaner and clearer position to evaluate every PD request.
Okay, Ms. Deacon, last comment.
Okay, I'll keep it really brief. And I would just say on that note, that my preference will always be biased towards bringing people to the district as opposed to sending people out of the district, because I think you get more bang for your buck if it's the right person, and more people get to participate in it, so, but that's more philosophical piece that's part of the strategic plan. I have to say that this notion that it's lack of notice provided by the conference, I agree with Mr. Herron. I, most conferences do publish their dates almost a year in advance. And so the fact that our staff doesn't know about it, to me, isn't always a great excuse.
Actually, I do have to comment, and I, probably conferences are not the proper term from this, for this. What happens very often is our California Department of Education, the Title I, Title III, those types of meetings, we get them literally days before. I mean, I'm just aghast sometimes. I mean, you get the email and it says, you know, three days, you've got to be in Fresno or Sacramento. That happens often.
That makes complete sense, and I, I understand the need to participate in something like that. But, but conferences per se that are recurring, we know when we're at one conference, the date for the one the next year, and we know the early bird dates, and I don't think we take advantage enough of those. And I don't think there's enough penalty for not doing that, because we've written language in here that says, it's not always possible due to lack of notice. So anybody can say, well, I didn't know.
Okay, on that, we are going to move to our next item. So Ms. Chate, you're going to still be up there. So our next item, F4, is the first reading of the proposed administrative regulation 3314.3, employee use of credit cards. And once again, Ms. Chate?
Yes, Herron, I'm back again. So basically, we don't have a credit card policy. And so we felt that we needed to create one, or an AR, to, to put some beef behind it and make sure that the credit cards were not abused. About a year ago, we had about 15 credit cards, and we pulled all but five. And four of them are in purchasing. So we only have, the superintendent's office has one for emergency-type situations. But we felt that with what's happening now, we needed to have some sort of credit card policy in place. So this is the first reading of the proposed administrative regulation 3314.
Okay. Board members, Ms. Lamone?
So Ms. Chate already has all of this, but I'm, I want to let the board know. Page two, under credit card users. Num, item number two, I would just change the wording so it's consistent with the rest of it, to secure the credit card while, since it's talking about what the credit card user shall do. And I would probably delete the word in that same line, delete the word below, after refer to card security below. And the word section, or even without it, could be probably left alone. Now, also on page two, under authorized travel purchases. I noted that some things, after of course reading the travel policy, that were missing, that were, that seemed to come up in the other policy, were meals, car rentals, gas for rentals, and baggage fees. And so I think Ms. Chate made a note of those as well. And then in that same section, under authorized travel purchases, I would delete F, since F is not an expenditure. And I would include wording, because I understand the importance of that, at the very top of that section. So the sentence would read, "The district credit card may be used for certain travel-related expenditures involving advanced arrangements for travelers who completed a request to be absent from regular assignment form." And so it includes that, but it, yeah, it reads better. Page three, under authorized small emergency purchases. Item number five, again, I would delete the word below and either replace it with the word section or not put anything. Page four, under credit card transaction log, item number three. I would include at the very end of that, within five business days, only because we don't get to the timeline until the very end of the policy. And my last one is page five, section five, under card security. I just wanted clarification. If the card is lost or in that card, whether the card or lost is stolen section, if, it probably should clarify that within 24 hours of becoming aware of the card versus 24 hours of the card being lost. Because someone can say, well, I probably lost it at a conference two, or something, two days ago, but they became aware. Yeah, and so I just wanted that to be clear, so.
I just want to comment on that one. I would actually prefer to leave it without the of becoming aware of, because obviously, they can't report it until they're aware that it's lost. And I feel like the, so, I mean, if they didn't know it was lost, obviously, we're not, we, we won't know it was lost. There's no way we can say, no, it's been more than 24 hours, because you really lost it on Friday, because we won't have any idea of when they lost it. But if, I feel like if we say of becoming aware, it gives too much wiggle room. Like, they can say, well, I wasn't aware of it until a week later. And I would prefer to have the language be as, you know, limited as possible.
And I could live with that. The only reason I put it is I don't want anyone to get penalized if dinged on anyway. Well, if they did lose it and they truly became aware after, and then it becomes a conversation about, well, you lost it on Friday, but you're reporting it on Monday. So, and there's, yeah, all these unauthorized purchases, so I, and maybe, I don't know if we want to just add something completely different instead of becoming aware, but I just, that was my worry. If someone, if they figured out, I lost it on Friday, but on Monday, they, on Monday, they figured out they lost it on Friday, and there's unauthorized purchases, then it becomes like, well, whose responsibility is it? Because you really lost it on Friday, and now you have to pay everything back, but it's like, well, no, I didn't know. Been there, done that, so. I'm just, I mean.
I understand your point, and maybe that language does serve to do that.
And I don't want to give folks more leeway, so again, if there's other recommend, if we can think of other language that would put the responsibility on the cardholder to notify ASAP, no matter what, but then not penalize any employee for truly losing it and not being aware that they misplaced, they lost the card.
It brings up a good point, though. If you lost it on Friday, who are you going to call until Monday? So we could have two days of unauthorized purchases on that credit card.
Don't you call the number on the card?
Wouldn't there be a number on the card that you could call?
You wouldn't have the card.
Oh, you don't have the card. That's right. Sorry.
So we may have to contact a district office. We'll have them call Dave.
Okay, other comments or concerns? Ms. Deacon?
I had a couple of questions and suggestions. On page one, under roles, definitions, and responsibilities, it says, "The purchasing coordinator." And then the last sentence says, "The credit card administrator." Are those two different people?
No, that was, that was me not finding the second one.
Okay. And then on number five.
So what should the language actually be?
And where did you see that again? I'm sorry. Oh, at the very last sentence?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one should it be?
It should be purchasing coordinator.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of thought that was. On number five, ensuring proper and timely submission of credit card payment. I would say instead of by the governing board, if I think this is what it means, submission of credit card payment authorization to the governing board? Is it, is it not coming to us to be authorized? So.
I believe this is basically saying that, well, it doesn't say it very well right here, but I would, that is, we want, we want every, all the documentation of all the credit card charges within five days, so we can get them reconciled, the cards reconciled, and to AP for payment before we reassess the charge, so.
Okay, it's, it's just a kind of a preposition thing, and I've.
Yeah.
The other, oh, just one small question. On page two, okay, so the board president, number 12, sorry, the top there. The board president will serve as the credit card reviewer approver for the superintendent. On six, immediately below that, credit card user, it says, "Return credit card to the credit card reviewer." I'm, I'm assuming Mrs. Cordero is not going to be in possession of the superintendent's credit card. So just, I'm not sure who that card goes, you know, if it needs to come back to anybody if it's a superintendent's.
Well, the superintendent doesn't have a district credit card.
Okay.
But you're right, if the superintendent did have a district credit card, we would want him to check it in or out.
So we need.
From whom, though?
I think we'll have to.
Shouldn't it be, should be you, I think, or the, or the, whatever that other person is, the.
The purchasing coordinator.
Yeah, we could do that.
Not the board president.
Okay, yeah. I was just trying to envision that. Funny. That was my last.
This may be a dumb question, but why doesn't the superintendent have a credit card?
I don't want one.
Oh, okay.
My office has one, but I think it's mostly, is it Barbara that uses it mostly?
For, yeah, for advertising or something quick, and Mimi, like, will put your, your ACES, not ACES, ASAS? What is, what is that?
AXA?
AXA, thank you.
Oh, okay.
You know, your membership on it, because it's, it's easier to do it on the credit card.
Got it.
Those types of things.
Ms. Parker?
So the purchasing coordinator, and it's Mr. Tangue. He issues cards. Who decides who gets a card? Is it Mr. Tangue who ultimately decides then?
If we, if we had our way, we would keep it just the way it is. But we understand that, you know, Dr. Cash travels way more than anyone used to in this district. So we understand that this would be a way for him to expedite travel. And, but we, we're not looking at this as giving cards out to employees of the district. I mean, the less.
Well, I understand that, yes.
The external auditors are just not.
But I, but I.
Yes, but then, but then.
Ms. Parker's question, though.
Who, who.
Who decides?
Who decides? Because it could be that, you know, site principals might need, feel that they need one, or.
Right now, we have Costco cards out there, which we feel are the same sort of situation as this. The each, we have like, I think, six Costco cards out at DP.
I'm sorry, by Costco card, do you mean a membership card to Costco?
Yes, yes.
They can charge on a PO, and we're not sure that.
They can?
Yeah, now, that's a different issue that I think we need to discuss.
Right.
I think that actually needs to come to us, and we need to have a full, full discussion about that. But I don't want us to get off our agenda item.
Wait, I just have a quick question. Who, under what name is the credit card that we're talking about?
The credit card that.
Any of the district.
We're just talking about a policy right now, so this policy will cover the five credit cards we have. We don't have to add or subtract any more.
Yeah, I think that's clear, is that this, there was no, there is, there was no guidance for the five credit cards we did have.
So the five credit cards, are they under the name of an individual or the name of the district?
I believe the foreign purchasing are under the individual name as of Santa Barbara.
So it says both on it, the way it would for the typical business credit card?
Yeah, and it comes across it, there's their bill, and it will come and say Brian Tangue, and then.
Santa Barbara Unified.
He has to have all the backup for everything that goes on his credit card.
I, I still think, I mean, this is all well and good for our situation right now, but I, we, and we need to have a policy that addresses who decides.
Let's say, for example, Robin decides she wants a credit card. Who would determine whether she gets one or not?
If I had my one, I'd say no one gets one. So you, I think we need guidance for that. I don't really, I don't think we want to expand on our credit cards. We just need the policy.
Yeah, I think maybe we should add some language in here that says, "Any new credit card must be approved by the board."
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense, yeah. Since the goal is really to provide guidance on the five we have.
Yeah.
And I don't know why we have five, but.
Well, because they order, you know, you have four people that book reservations and do all things at one time, so we have.
Okay, Ms. Lamone?
I, I don't want to change anything, but I do want to offer an alternative perspective. At UCSB, we have credit cards, and they're under the individual's name, and usually, it's a manager of such. And the policy is straightforward. If it's not approved, if you didn't get it approved, it comes out of your pocket. And it's your credit, it's your social security that's attached to the credit card. So in, as we think about this, that has been a safeguard for a campus that is bigger in employment size and student size, and a lot of travel happens, but it's very cutthroat. Like, if it's not approved, it's your credit card. You deal with it, you pay for it. So as we think about the five people who are on there, and if it truly makes sense, in, at some point, not right now, not more than five, but at some point to think about this, if there really is a division, department head, or what have you, that would merit having a credit card under that name, of course affiliated to the district, we may want to think about something that doesn't put the school district as the sole kind of entity that's responsible for the payment, but the individual. And I would be happy to share our credit card policies, our forms, if it's ever useful.
Okay. On, under travel purchases made with a credit card, under two, we have unauthorized travel charges on credit card. It doesn't say they will be held responsible, but there is, there is a problem. But we could add that in any unauthorized expenditures, but see, okay, there's.
It will result in the employee reimbursing the district for any unauthorized charges.
Now, let me ask you, well, okay, so we had one, one incident where nobody claimed, that it's the Smart and Final card again, you know. Nobody claimed that that was their $500 charge, so Smart and Final ate it. And now we have to go through this huge process to even get out there and use a Smart and Final card, so.
And if that's a.
And if, that's a perfect example. In a situation like that, if the person had a credit card under his or her name, hey, it's on your charge, you're responsible. So, it's almost kind of the reverse of our process, and I don't, I'm not encouraging us to go in that direction, I just throw it out as an option to see if we can pick up anything that would be useful for us. But ultimately, the benefit of people being responsible for their own credit card is that, there is no question, and you wouldn't get a chart, people are, I mean, it's your credit card, it's your social securities. People are extra careful what's on there and making sure that the balance is paid on time.
But remember that our purchasing department is making purchases for people outside at those 17 sites. So to sit there and beg this, you know, people to turn in their receipts, turn in their receipts, is not an easy task.
I would agree.
So it's really, it's a very difficult, very time-consuming, very cumbersome process. So, if nobody fesses up, I would hate to see one of our employees get nailed for a $500 charge when a, on a site won't turn in their receipts.
Right, but the, but the, the philosophy would need to change to, from the purchasing department only having it, to, truthfully, more people would need to have it, which I know you're against, but that's the plus, that, I mean, there's, in some sense, there's more accountability. And when the notice of, "Hey, your corporate card is about, you know, you need to pay it in 30 days," and you're getting the notice versus the district getting the notice, it changes things. And so, I, again, I'm not suggesting that we go in that direction, but those things are harder, are easier to avoid, actually, because it's very clear that when there's, when we think about if the heads had a credit card and they become responsible, well, then they have to figure it out versus an employee that's doing it for 1,600 other employees. And again, I'm not suggesting we move in that direction, it's, but I, I throw it out as, I mean, there is something to gain in thinking about this differently.
Okay.
Well, my question...
Ms. Parker, and then I'm going to try to have us pull this to a...
An end.
An end, yeah.
This is so fun, though, Mrs. Cordero. My question is from Ms. Lamont, then, I think I just need a little clarification of the process. So, at, uh, institution like UCSB, a department head has a credit card with his or her name on it, and then, you know, UCSB, they, they pay for it, they, or they use it, they pay, the bill comes to them, they pay the bill, and then they get reimbursed by UCSB?
Nope. Um, that, what happens is that, if I have a credit card, I use it, I actually have less days than 60, I have 21 days to submit receipts, if not, too bad. So I have 21 days to submit receipts, and, um, I submit it, submit the receipts to kind of our fiscal agent, it goes through accounting, accounting pays it. But if, in the timeline, if for some reason, let's say I did wait till the 21 days instead of doing it five days after, well, I'm getting notices from my corporate card saying, "You have a payment that's due, you have a payment due," and I, the, the notice is coming to me. Um, so, it basically, I mean, it's the same process, it, it makes me more accountable because I need to submit it in a timely manner, and I'm getting the notices, um, and it's my credit. And, I mean, that's, my social security is attached to the credit card, so, um, and we don't give corporate cards to everybody, but I, truthfully, they're used for things exactly as we're talking about, for travel, um, for certain items that need, marketing brochures, things that need to be purchased right away, or where you can get an online deal that's better than what you might get elsewhere. So, I mean, and I don't want, because this would be a whole transformation, but...
Okay, so I'm going to maybe, uh, move us ahead a little bit. It might be helpful if we, if we have an interest in moving in that direction, to get the UCSB policies and look at them and see if any of that would be worthwhile.
City College does the same thing.
And, and City, perhaps City College as well. Or if we're not interested in moving in that direction, then we can go forward with the language that we prefer. I had just two quick, I think, I think, quick questions. If they're not quick, we don't have to deal with them now. Two of them are on one, on page, uh, one. The first question is just, um, it says, "The purpose of this regulation is to establish guidelines for the use of credit cards that are, uh, maintained by the Santa Barbara Unified School District for the use by its management employees. Credit cards are to be used primarily for," and then it lists a variety of things that they should be used for. Is there a reason why we didn't say they should be used only for these things?
No, just an oversight.
Is, would it work to say "only"? Credit cards are to be used only for authorized business-related travel expenditures, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, considering the people who have them now, it would be more than that, because the purchasing department does do a lot on their account card.
Okay, so then it would be primarily, so there is a reason for using primarily?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. Then, and then, under number seven, on that same page, "Revoking credit card privileges of employees and/or departments if necessary for noncompliance with established policies and procedures." I would like, if it's appropriate, to have the board notified if somebody is having their privileges revoked because they've misused the card. Does that violate any...
It's probably a closed session item, I would think, personnel.
Sure, might be closed session, but we could, but I'd still like to have the information.
You should know.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think...
So since there's only five cards...
That's it for me, yeah.
Pretty easy to guess who they might be.
Yeah. Okay.
What does the definition of management employees in that first sentence?
Can we give it to her? Yeah, okay. Okay, so, I'm sorry, what...
What is the definition of management employees in that first sentence you just read?
Well, I would think that that is assistant principals, principals, anyone in the management, our team, but, oh, as I express with Ms. Lamont, please, no. For right now, anyway, until we get a handle on...
Yeah, before you do a lot of research, I'm not in favor of expanding it, so...
Yeah, I'm not either. Okay, so, with that, I got quite a lot of feedback, probably more than you wanted, and I'm not sure it was entirely clear, but, um, we'll have you bring this back to us at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work on that. Okay, so we are returning to our consent agenda, um, item D eight. Ms. Lamont, I believe that you pulled that one?
That was me. Yes, and I have two questions. One, I noticed that the license is just for one year, so I wanted to know how many additional years we're going to need it, um, and if it's always going to be at that price.
I, I actually won't know about the price. I doubt that it would change much. This tool is, and I'm sorry if it, I couldn't describe it well enough to what it does, but it, um, first of all, I should say that the teachers who went to the Model Schools Conference in the summer saw this demonstrated, and there was always this huge pile, you know, group of people around it, because it was kind of the hot item. And so all of those teachers, 25-plus, I guess, were there, all wanted it then. I mean, one of our, one of our, uh, principals actually had her own personal credit card and was like, "Can I buy it now?" Because it, it appeared to be very highly useful. So it has our current content standards, it marks on, on, with each standard if it's high importance, medium or low importance on our current STAR exam, and then it aligns directly with the Common Core. Now, sometimes there's not a direct alignment, but it aligns those, and it shows exactly for English Language Arts and Math, how those line up. And then it has a whole assortment in its building every day of sample, next-generation assessments. So, the, the tool itself is useful in not only aligning the standards, but allowing our teachers to try sampling some of those newer kinds of assessments, um, you know, really looking at the different kind of curriculum and how, how we're moving. So, to answer your question specifically, I would say it's a 12-month, it's not a school year. So, looking at the implementation, we start our testing, presumably we'll be starting in 2014, 15. So, if we kind of went November to November, or say, December to December, December to December, it could potentially be two years for that particular tool. Um, I couldn't see us necessarily, maybe a third year, but it's also evolving and growing. As I said, the assessments are, um, there's probably more than 300 on there now. So that's one of the memberships. The other membership is the Successful Practices Network, and that's a network of schools all over the country. That I could see, if our teachers find that highly useful, could be longer. I mean, it's, it would be up to them, and it can be a school decision, it doesn't have to be a district decision. But again, those teachers who were introduced to that really found it to be highly valuable right now. There's online professional development, there's a networking of best practices and teachers, you know, chat rooms and, and go, getting, getting together. There's, there's the option of having coaches and, and that kind of thing, but the real, the part that seemed to be the big highlight was the Gold Seal lessons, and those are exemplary lessons aligned to Common Core with next-generation assessments, and there are over, oh, gosh, I think it's 1,200 or something, I can't remember, oh, no, 2,000 right now, and they're adding all the time. So, that one, I can't say. I mean, depending on how useful teachers find that, that could be something that schools prioritize and say, "This is really important for us to keep going." So, I, I, I can't answer, you know, how they will find that. But the Next Navigator, I, you know, I think it has a use now in the implement, the transition part.
Right, and so I guess I was just asking, because I would hate to invest in a system or a software that is a long ter, that's meant to be a long-term, um, product, and if we don't have the capacity to make that same type of investment next year, then you find that really year one was not as useful because it was meant to be a five-year tool.
Oh, no, uh, we could have it for three months and use it and be, find great value in it. The teachers really liked it when they got to experiment with it for two months, we had it for free, and they, all teachers had the option of going and looking at using it and trying it out, and that's why we got commitments. I actually got it in writing twice from every school to make sure that they did want to go forward and use it.
It, it's, there's nothing else like it out there. I, I know there was a question about, "Have we evaluated all the other products?" Well, there aren't any. This is such an emerging area with this new type of assessment on the Common Core, that there are, there aren't models. I, I, like I said earlier, I was with the college board, I had a college board representative last week talk about the AP reexam, and, um, they're, they're struggling mightily on how to do that. There just aren't ways in which we're going to have a better opportunity for teachers to see how kids will be assessed than this right now. And I agree with Robin, if we only had it for one year, that one year, at least for all the teachers in our district, would be a real good view. Whoa, okay, this is not the flat bubble in the, you know, the response CST exam, this is the very robust, "I have to apply my knowledge" question.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Can we...
Can I just ask that we develop some way to monitor use, so that if we get it, we know who's using it, how often, so that we know if it's actually being used?
Okay. Can we have a motion?
I will move to approve item D eight, which is the approval of the purchase of a year-long site license for the Next Navigator and Successful Practice Network online resources memberships.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay, so that brings us to, uh, almost the end of our agenda. Coming events, uh, I think we discussed some of those. Are there any additional coming events that we need? We have our, our list here of all, of the high school performances, high school and junior high, no, yeah, high school and junior high performances. Anything else that we...
There are several career, um, days coming at the junior high schools. One was held at La Colina this past week, I think. There's one at Lacumbra coming up, I think there's one at Kalida Valley coming up. I went to the one at, um, La Colina and heard the, uh, Mr. Ortiz give the, uh, initial kickoff, it was fantastic.
Great.
Everything I heard about it was very good, so if you can drop into one of the career days, it'd be good.
Okay, good. And then, is the gate, uh, meeting tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night at McKinley School.
At McKinley School.
6:30 to 8:30.
And there will be childcare provided, yes.
Yes, childcare.
So, hopefully...
I'll be at the Monroe PTA meeting, I haven't had a chance to meet with them.
Okay, okay. So, okay, and then future agenda items? We said this issue of store cards, like, um, the Costco cards, the, et cetera, we need to bring back, um, on an agenda? And was there anything else that anybody can think of? Okay, and I think we have an agenda already. We will not be meeting November 22nd, so our next, uh, regular board meeting will be Tuesday, December 13th. So have, have a nice month. Yes, yes.
Right.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned.